That one was adjusted right, but now it's, I think that's slow. That one's fast. I went to the men's room on the way in here.
I know.
To relieve myself and I still had to use an air dryer. Take it out of three ninety-five.
Two eighty-nine.
Three ninety?
Two ninety, isn't it? Is it three ninety?
Here she comes. She knows when.
Call to order, the Saint Joseph City Council meeting of Monday, February twenty-second. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, you're right, we have to. It's still five fifty-nine. Item two, public comments. Item three, approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by aye.
Discussion, I'd like to poll four J.
That's consent agenda, that would be the next one.
Oh.
Item three, approval of the agenda, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item four, consent agenda.
I'll move. So second.
Motion and second, you guys can fight over it. Motion and second, further discussion.
I'd like to poll J.
Very good, motion and second for consent agenda. We will move on the A through I and talk about J. Motion and second on consent agenda, A through I, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does carry, four J. JPA.
Uh, so, Therese, I think you know where, I'd like just some background on the joint powers agreement we have with the city of Saint Cloud. I printed out that email we got from someone from the city, so just educate us on how that works and how it's to our benefit.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and Chief Finacy might want to chime in too, but essentially the city has had an agreement with the city of Saint Cloud, a joint powers agreement since two thousand and ten. They have always charged a flat fee for their services, that's what they also do with their other jurisdictions that they provide services to, such as Sartell. So they provide our, they do our criminal prosecution, essentially. And tonight before you is an updated joint powers agreement, really reflecting their proposed rate increases. They have not done that for Saint Joseph since two thousand and seventeen. So that's really the update, but we know one of the questions that Councilor Klosner raised earlier was what is regards to what they do for us, so I had a response from Renee Courtney, who is the city attorney for the city of Saint Cloud, and she shared that they opened five hundred and eight criminal cases for the city of Saint Joseph in two thousand and twenty-one. That does not include traffic offenses, where they have appeared on behalf of the city of Saint Joseph at arraignments. So there's those in addition to the five hundred and eight, is where I'm going with that. They also cover administrative code enforcement and parking appeal cases, and in two thousand and twenty-one, they covered twenty-two of those. Dwight, do you want to clarify any other additions in regards to what they do for us?
How much history would you like?
Well, I mean, it's an asset for us as a city to have the city of Saint Cloud prosecute for us. Yes?
Yes or no? It can be. It can't be a yes or no on this one, because we used to, we used to have it privately done through Akowski Hansmer years ago, and what ended up happening was it started to get really expensive on, we couldn't budget a solid number every year. So some years it would spike, some years it would be lower, but every year, you know, it was different. And then, uh, under Chief Jansky, somehow, I don't exactly know if the city of Sartell or Saint Cloud approached us, but then they had asked if we wanted to do this for a flat rate, and that seemed very desirable, because we had that one. There's been some grumbling over the years between both the city and county, we don't have a choice with the county because of the county, but as far as who's going to do our prosecution, we did look two years ago about going to a private sector again, uh, but that never got off the ground, just because we were looking at, you know, basically, what do we get? You, you raised some good questions, what do we get? Do they have to earn their money, they have to work for it, they just get a flat fee? Where do ours go for? So I had raised those concerns a couple of years ago, and it kind of died out, so.
And I don't have a problem approving this, I just want some background on it. So are you confident when one of your officers brings a case into Saint Cloud for prosecution, that they follow through and get it done?
There is advantages, that we do have Sartell, Wade Park, Saint Cloud, and Saint Joe all prosecuted by the same attorney, so that they're familiar with the cases, they can sometimes combine them to get at least a guilty, you know, verdict in one of the cities, in the interest of justice. So, but, I mean, we had a little bit of issues, we had some communication deals on both ends where there was cases not being pursued, we weren't getting answers. And there's some clarification, it's been follow-up, and it's been a lot better since then, so. So as of right now, I have no concerns moving forward, but, you know, we just address them as they come up.
So from my standpoint, you're on point. You're the person in our city that says this is working or it's not working.
Correct.
So if we looked at this a year, or two, or three from now.
Yep.
If we needed a different way to do it, you would give us a recommendation?
Yep, there was a little break.
Is that fair?
Yep, there was a breakdown for a little bit where some of the assisted attorneys were just dismissing cases without going to the lead or coming to me, and we were getting the resolutions, and that was not the proper way to do it. We had some clarifications, and I think everybody's on board now, so. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions or concerns?
Yeah, Dwight, you know, the, uh, she stated five hundred cases, and all that, he must have a spreadsheet or something with all that numbers on. Out of five hundred cases, how many were convictions versus dismissals?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't even give you a guess right off the top of my head without that, I, I would have no idea. I mean, if you, if you asked the different officers, they'd say less than half, because it's just the, the way it is nowadays, and once they get to court, it completely depends on what mood sometimes the judges are in each day. You know, you could put together the best, most airtight case, and because of COVID and everything else, they're just kind of expediting things and grouping them together, and there's been a lot more probation given than convictions, so. Just what we're in.
Man, just an interesting number for me to know, anyway.
Other questions or concerns? Looking for a motion.
So move to approve the JPA.
Motion and second, consent agenda for J, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item five, public hearing, fee schedule.
Actually, I can, I can take that on.
Okay.
Yeah, so essentially, um, yeah, so because you're amending your fee schedule, a public hearing is required this evening, but the, the public, the proposed fee updates are due to the ordinance amendments from your last meeting. One was, you know, updating your penalty and fee ordinance, really, and you also updated your regulation of animals, and then you established a new ordinance addressing therapeutic massage establishment and therapists. So with that, those fees are reflected, you can see those highlighted in red in your packet in regards to the changes. In respects to the parking violations, it, it basically just cleans it up. So you'll see, okay, why is truck parking violation being removed? It's, it's going to be covered under parking violation, so we just wanted to clean it up, you know, it's still, if there's still a violation related to truck parking, it's, we're still going to attach a fee to that, if that makes sense. Um, in regards to the massage ordinance fees that are proposed, that is related to the cost to the city. So essentially, the other item that's before you this evening is a joint powers agreement for massage investigation from the city of Saint Cloud, since they have, uh, they have their health departments, so they have employees that are trained, and then they have the equipment. So that would be another action we would ask you to take this evening to approve that joint powers agreement for them to do the massage investigation on the establishment. So they would be charging us four hundred and sixty-five dollars for that service, and, and we're proposing that that would be passed down to the massage establishment. The other part of that is the massage therapist license, that is specific to the therapist. We do a background check on them, and we'll do that, at this point, we'll be doing that in-house. Our police officer, likely one of our sergeants will do that. The first one is, well, actually, all of them are extensive, but the first one's the most extensive, it goes back ten years, and then after that, it's renewed annually, and we go back one year. So there's that fee of eighty dollars, and then the renewal would be forty dollars for the individual therapist's license. We still would propose that the annual establishment license fee be four sixty-five, because the city of Saint Cloud, again, that's what they charge, so we would propose it be passed on.
Question on that, if that's what they charge, but what is the actual cost?
That is actually their cost.
Their cost?
Yes. Which they would charge the city, and that's why we're proposing that, um, the establishment.
The one thing on the ordinance that we just adopted last week, I believe, is that, um, there's no way to, in that ordinance, there is actually no way to prosecute a massage parlor, if you want to call it that, where they would do the illicit things that, you know, that is stereotypical of a massage parlor not wanted. Our ordinance doesn't cover where we can go in because of this and that, you know? And just by the, with this Rose Jansen emails, all of them, I mean, they were fairly short. But, uh, you know, she, she noted that there's a state one that's up before the legislature right now, hasn't been passed yet, you know? So I'm thinking somehow we can amend our ordinance that we have right now to include the state version, because that requires the therapist to have training. Right now, there is no training required, anybody can be a therapist, hang a shingle on their yard, build a garden.
So our. Let's do this, hold on, let's do this, let's, let's finish the fee schedule, and we can talk about the ordinance later. There isn't anything before the state legislature at this time?
Uh, according to what I've been reading.
No, it, there is not, there's no House file introduced.
Okay, but I like, I like the, whatever was proposed there.
Let's, let's deal with the fee schedule amendment right now, and then we can talk about whatever other adjustments we may or may not have to make to said ordinance.
So I'm not, I'm not, uh, in favor of approving the fee schedule as it relates to the specifics on the massage therapists and massage practices. So we either table it, the whole thing, or we carve out the massage part of the fee thing, and we keep, because I'm looking at
Thank you.
Councilman Bianix's email that she sent to us, like
Ten minutes.
Forty minutes before this meeting, um, and whatnot, so I'm not okay going forward with the fee schedule that encompasses the, the whole massage deal.
Can I interrupt? Mayor?
We haven't even started the public hearing yet, but maybe we should start and stop the public hearing before we have this discussion.
Well, you're in charge.
I haven't been in charge since I've been here. Uh, so, that being said, introduction of the public fee schedule, or the fee schedule amendment, I'm going to open the public hearing, see if anyone come forward, we're going to close the public hearing, and now, let's have some discussion about it. Laura, you wanted to say something about the...
I was just going to say that we should get the public comment, and I think you had some public comment, maybe that was
Oh, did you?
Delivered, or, or is that not public, for the public hearing?
No, the, the letter that was shared with you all, I, that's, we put that in the public package.
Okay. So that's already public information?
So.
Do you want to read them all?
So the question is, Laura, can we carve out the fees specific to the new ordinance and approve everything else?
Yes, you can, you can make a motion on how you want to.
Okay.
I'll move to, to approve the fee schedule as presented with the tabling of the massage ordinance fees for, for later discussion.
Motion and second, John, you had some questions?
Okay, so, the public hearing came up, you know, we got this, this email from Rose. I get what you guys are saying, too. I think the biggest thing I see and hear is, yes, it's her fees, the fees are going from zero to
Five hundred.
Five hundred dollars, that is, I think, the biggest thing that we see in here. My question is, if we table it and push it forward, the ordinance and the things that we want to kind of see, then do they stop? They cease? Do we not do background checks, do we not do any inspections of said businesses that we have until it gets approved?
So you should have, um, the ordinance is still in the books.
Okay.
Okay, but you're, you're going to want to attach a fee
Right.
to that, so you wouldn't necessarily, I would say you wouldn't implement it until you just figure out how you want to do fees.
Implement the ordinance, is what you're saying.
We've already, have we published the ordinance?
Yes, the ordinance, ordinance has been published.
So it's already in effect?
It is already in effect.
But the fees aren't in the ordinance.
Right, that's before you this evening.
Yes, the fees are, the fees for that ordinance aren't in the ordinance, per se, they're on a different piece of paper that says fees.
I know, but what I'm saying is that the ordinance goes forward, and we do an inspection, then it's at no cost right now. Is that what we're saying?
Right, but we would suggest that you don't, you don't.
It's kind of a tangled web here.
Right, so my, but my question is.
We kind of put the cart ahead of the horse.
Right, I have a question.
Yeah.
My question is, I know the fees for this one individual, who is obviously a business owner in our community, is the biggest thing.
Yep.
You know, you're going from zero to five hundred, that's a lot. I get in her whole email of what we saw, that's the biggest underlying thing that I saw. And it's one of those where, you know, it's something to where, since we're kind of doing this very fast, is it something to where the fees go back onto the city for this first year? And we take those fees, and then it gives them, call it another year, to understand the ordinance, the fees that would be implicant, implicated to them. But we put it back onto the city, and we pay those fees first for this ordinance right now. And now, you're talking about, it's, you're talking about a business owner that that's the biggest thing that she has a problem with. We take over that fee, we still keep going forward with it, right? And it's a one-time thing, and now you're looking at the second year, we pass it on to maybe the businesses.
And I support that idea.
Of the new ones. Correct, well, but, and, but it's also the established ones as well. But now, instead of, oh crap, I only have three weeks to absorb this, and there's a lot of emotions, as you can tell from the emails, from this one out of the three businesses that said that we have, well, let's take that away in that concern, and put it back on the city to say, we decided to do this for, you know, talk, talk about legitimate businesses that we want in our community, clearly, that's what we want.
Right.
We take on the cost for the first year.
Yeah.
And then, the second year, it goes back on to you with the understanding of now, this is what we want. That is my suggestion.
The council's had a chance to discuss it as well.
Yes.
Figured out what the fee might be.
Right, and again, now you have another year.
What Kelly may have some discussion about.
And, you know, and, and talking with Kelly, I think she would agree with that, too, but it's, it's one of those where we take on that first year, what's to say we can't discuss the fee next year, too?
Yeah.
And it comes down. So if this is the fee that's in place, this is what Saint Cloud is charging us, and it's a humdigger to her, right? Take that out, put it back on us, because this is what we're doing, now you have a whole other year to understand it, right? And if we still disagree, we still get some, some backlash from some of these businesses, now we talk about the fee in its sense of changing the fee, like we've done with the other ones.
Well, this way, we'll have a year to absorb
Correct.
or to, uh, research and listen.
We're not going to break the bank.
Correct. Three businesses right now, fifteen, to call it two thousand dollars, I get that, right? But then, now they have a year to understand, and now we have illegitimate businesses that we want here, that are doing good for our community, and ones that we probably don't. That's my suggestion.
I support that.
Motion and second on the floor.
I don't know what is this, right?
The motion and second on the floor is to carve out the massage, the new licensing fees we have for this, and let, approve everything else.
And I would, I would say nay to that.
May, motion and second on the floor, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Want to make another motion now, to?
I do, I would like to move to, um, adopt the ordinances of the first one, and then that the city pays for the fee this year.
Second, motion and second, we're not going to carve out any fees, we're going to, city's going to be responsible for the fees this year for whatever inspections have to be done.
For twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-one.
Add to that motion, if you may, that, uh, through the next following year, we will research.
Well, right.
And, you know, that's
So the motion I had is just this year.
We're going to have more discussion.
Exactly.
That's what I want, I don't want it just to drop
Nope.
and boom, and then come next year, we're going, huh.
Yep.
We didn't talk about it, we didn't do nothing.
But we talk about all the fees technically when budget season comes, too.
Yeah.
Right, and I think that'd be on.
Well, I'd like to get, uh, like, uh, Ms. Jansen, uh, Justina's, uh, the one on Cedar Avenue, that's a new one, from what I understand.
Right, but I think with, with the motion that we have here, it takes away what her biggest concern is, and it puts the liability of the money back onto us, and then we have a whole year, so that's my motion, now.
And that's the second, motion and second, move forward, city will be responsible for the fees, fee structure gets approved at the same time. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Good discussion, gentlemen. Uh, item six, engineering reports. Very good, thanks, Randy.
Before we move on to the next item, um, we do have, uh, the, uh, resolution authorizing the summary publication that you take action on, and then the third, um,
Oh, of the
action that we would ask you is to take action on the joint powers agreement for massage establishment inspection services with the city of Saint Cloud.
Oh, there's three actions. I'll move to adopt resolution twenty, William, try that again, I move to adopt resolution twenty-two, ten, authorizing summary of the publication.
Motion and second, resolution twenty-two, ten, the summary publication, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? What's the next one?
I'll move to approve the joint powers agreement for massage establishment inspections services with the city of Saint Cloud.
Second, motion and second, establishment of the JPA. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a third one?
That was the third.
That was the third?
First one was the fee.
Very good, thank you. Randy, nice report, thank you. Seven A, administration.
Oh, wow, we did just skip past them, didn't we?
He said no, you're right, you said there was no report?
He nodded, I didn't, I didn't see that.
My question is, Randy doesn't have a report, why are you here?
Just in case we have a question for him.
Just in case you have questions for me, exactly. And we're paying you to be here?
Nope.
No.
Or not, okay.
You can still ask him a question, if you'd like.
I could start charging you, if you'd like, but.
Randy's very diligent about that, thank you. Seven A, Therese?
Yeah, so the report, of course, is in your packet, and some of them took action on this evening, but, um, we're, we're going to finalize the construction manager agreement with our attorney. You approved the license agreement for the old fire hall mezzanine, um, so I worked on that with our attorney. You took action on the twenty-two compost agreement, um, I'm compiling a fundraising list, um, for Heart, Heart Sick Fundraising Consultant.
I have a question for you on that, how's that going? How many people do we have?
Approximately, actually, Councilor Klosner gave me some context as well, so I'll have to take a look at that, but I had a list of, was it about eighty? Do you remember what I had on the list for starts? I don't remember, I want to say about eighty.
I added on a bunch more, so.
Yeah, he added on a bunch more.
Are we going to discuss to, a little bit more tomorrow with the, the, or are we just doing Murray tomorrow?
Yeah, so what John's referring to is tomorrow evening, we're having a community center committee, um, meeting, and we're going to be looking at pre-design, essentially, with the amenities.
Good.
I've had several meetings with Greg Jake, with the YMCA and HMA on the community center, working with Saint Cloud Attorney's Office with citations and ordinances. Randy, Dwight, and I met with the principal of Saint Joseph Catholic School today, uh, on the traffic study that was completed for Minnesota Street last fall. If you recall, at your work session, I believe it was December, November, December, you had directed staff to reach out to the principal and provide an update and get input, so that'll be at a future, um, work session as well. For staffing, we received three applications for police officer openings, so we'll be interviewing for that. The recreation program under, um, our director, Rhonda, um, is moving forward, she's planning a lot of events. Tales on Trails is coming up this weekend, and we have yoga here. Upcoming meetings, I mentioned the community center committee, um, meeting. We have the council work session on the third of March, um, and then as well as the all-city board meeting on March twenty-second.
Questions, anyone? Very good, thank you, Therese. Community gentlemen?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council, so I'll just highlight a few items on my report here. So the planning commission at their February fourteenth, not January fourteenth, typo there on my memo, uh, had discussion on the topic of wedding and event venues within rural residential areas. They decided to continue that discussion next month, we had, uh, three members that were absent, so they wanted to continue that discussion. We are going to have a joint planning board on March ninth. I have been working with Randy on getting estimates for phase one for East Park, with the hope and intent that we will pursue a grant for East Park phase one improvements, yes, question?
Can we slow down and go back to the wedding and event center discussion? So how is that being discussed at the planning commission?
Yeah, so essentially
Has there been someone that has proposed?
So
I mean, why did it come up on the agenda?
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we had an inquiry regarding, um, property within
From whom?
Um, uh, someone looking to purchase land, potentially.
To do what?
To have a wedding venue.
Where?
Um, I can't say the specific property, but I can say it's within a rural residential area.
So it's not in the city?
It is, it is in the city. Yep.
Because it's in stuff that's been annexed.
Right.
Yeah, correct. Yep, so I wanted to have the planning commission have a discussion to see what concerns they may have for a use like that in that district.
And what concerns do you think they should have?
I think that they should have, uh, some of the stuff that staff highlighted was minimum acreage requirements for a use like that, screening, uh, utility concerns.
Building codes?
Yeah, you have all the building, yep, parking, so, um, at minimum, if anything was to be supported, it would definitely have to be a conditional use.
So you're our liaison to planning?
Yep.
So you need to articulate that we have in the city a wedding venue place that's been in business for a long time and had to follow all the city rules. And now we annexed township property that falls into the rural, whatever it's called. And so my expectation is that people that want to do that activity within their rural annexation is going to follow the same types of guidelines that the city would have.
Correct, yeah, and right now, it's not even allowed, so the code doesn't even allow that use. So I wanted to have the discussion with the planning commission to see what their concerns and input are for a consideration for something like that. So, yeah, we talked about a variety of different things, again, screening, yeah, parking, landscaping, acreage requirements, uh, utilities, a whole host of things, so we'll be continuing that discussion.
So whoever's proposing this, just, it's not going to be a carte blanche, get it through Saint Joe Planning, and then we're just going to sit here and approve it three or four, or five, or six months from now?
No.
That's not going to happen?
There's a process that they'd have to go through.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
That never happens. So are we talking about rezoning that land?
Uh, no, it wouldn't be a rezone, per se, we're talking about just the use, and if that fits within a rural residential district, so.
What's the comprehensive plan say that is right now on the zoning?
It's guided for low-density residential.
So why wouldn't you rezone it?
Uh, there's a variety of different reasons, so it could be spot zoning, it could be, um, a variety of different avenues that we would not recommend to rezone.
But, and, and I get that spot zoning stuff, but if you're building an event center in the middle of a, could be a multi-residential area, aren't you actually rezoning it? Because the use changes immensely.
So part of the topic, too, stems in the fact that, uh, over the, the years recently especially, there's been a lot of interest in converting, like, old farm barns and that into venues like this. So the use is pretty common in rural areas and in agricultural areas. So it's not necessarily, I would be concerned about changing the zoning, because if you change the zoning, then you're allowing any commercial use within that district, no matter what it is, whatever's permitted in our commercial district. So that's the, some of the reasoning behind, uh, the approach in, if you were to, um, consider this within a rural area, it should, one, for definitely be a conditional use, and then, two, um, how does that really fit the long-term vision and plan of the city? So
So nay, right?
And, and just, just because there's, you know, other farm properties out there too, um, I don't know of, you know, specifically. Individual property that's interested per se in converting a farm or barn, but I want to have that conversation. So we're ahead of, you know, anything too.
So Nate, I'm going to point to Milk and Honey, which, that's a business that is succeeding and I want it to succeed. But they went from, we're going to grow apples and just have little quiet sips of apple cider. And now they're doing wedding venues and it's going to get louder and I'm thinking of the people that live around that area. And so what we're talking about with this next initiative is where I'm just saying, let's pause and make sure we know what we're doing.
Yeah, so that's where the conditional use would come into play, with the conditional use, you can tie hours, you can tie, um, inspections. You can tie a whole host of different conditions to that and then hold them to, uh, those conditions. So essentially gives the city greater power in enforcing and controlling that use. So it's not becoming a, um, obnoxious use or that.
Has to go through planning commission.
Yep, correct.
So anyone that has an interest in this topic would be at a planning meeting.
Yeah, it would have to go through planning commission, yeah, and again.
This developer or, you know, person that inquired about this come before the planning commission and lay out his proposal. You know, and then we could have sent him out for, well, you have to get a, a variance or, you know.
So, yeah, so staff had the, that discussion with this inquiry and we wanted to talk with the planning commission on the use. Not get into the details on the specific request because it's really has to start with the use and is that use compatible within that district? If the planning commission, you know, says no, it's not, then that future applicant or that cannot apply for anything. Cause the use isn't granted in that district, so there would be a process, there'd have to be an amendment to the district. Then there have to be likely a conditional use, so then, if that were to be supported ultimately, they'd have to go through that conditional use.
Well, or we could just put that on another, you know, special use permit required.
So, co- uh, council, uh, you had mentioned variance, so just to, to clarify, in the state of Minnesota, you actually can't do, uh, use variances. So it would have to, if you, if you did allow it, it would be an amendment to the rural residential ordinance. You would add it as a use, whether it be outright permitted or, or through a conditional use.
Right.
That would be, um, you know, you would decide that.
Simplify things to be under a special use and then.
It'd be through a conditional use, which is for all practical purposes, the same thing as special use, you know, bear in mind.
This way the developer could move forward to get a conditional use, you know, apply for a conditional use permit and spill out his plan.
Yeah, so council member Lo, so we, we, we want to just have that conversation about, does this use fit into this district? You know, and, uh, what concerns does the planning commission have for this, you know, use in the district? So we have to answer that question first.
You're on the planning commission, aren't you?
Yeah, I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay, okay.
But I'm just saying.
Showing up.
Yeah.
You know, like you stated, you stated there's a developer looking, you know, so I mean. It would be better off to hear the developer at the planning commission level to see what, what they want and, you know. What they plan on doing or in the general area, because I mean, every area is different that everybody sees, depending what the comp plan says.
And I think Nate's doing it fine, he came and asked some questions and, and he might eventually end up at the planning commission or he might listen to the things and say, no, I don't want to go with.
So we can move on, thank, thank you Nate for listening to our concerns.
Yeah, thank you for sharing them, so, uh, as I was touching on before, Randy and I are working on engineer estimates. For phase one for East Park with the hope that we'll pursue a grant, uh, we'll have some more discussion at the park board next week on that. And then would come forth to the council with a resolution, C V B is la- has launched the Field of Love February Initiative. That's a partnership between Little Falls, Wade Park and St. Cloud and us, so you can check out more at enjoycentralminnesota.com for that. And then the last thing that I had is Rhonda, Ryan, Randy, Lori and I all met early this month. Regarding trail and sidewalk priorities, so you'll have some, um, staff input or recommendations. On the transportation plan coming forth at a work session, um, from that conversation, so.
That's the active transportation, like biking, walking.
Yeah, yep, so, uh, within our.
Not roads and bridges.
Yep, correct, sidewalks and trails, so look for that.
Hills and valleys.
That's all that I have, any other questions?
Yeah, the East Park, I, I sent you a couple of weeks ago about the bonding request, it's a twenty eighteen, we last submitted it. And so we should be pursuing that as well, Lisa and Jeff are both expecting that to come before them.
Yes, and I've been in contact with both of them regarding that.
Very good, and I want to know what a paddle share is.
Yeah, so that's a great question, so, um.
I'm serious, I've never heard of it.
Yeah, so.
Meeting you went to, I don't know what a paddle share is.
So, think about the bike share system that we have, uh, it would be a canoe type of share system. Uh, it would relate to maybe a future amenity at East Park, it's really, I just had a conversation with a organization. Who has a paddle share and just wanted to find out what goes into it, how is it managed, what are costs? And just kind of understand the idea.
So we should bring Stearns County Park into those discussions.
Yeah, so eventually, uh, we would bring in not just Stearns County Parks, but actually a couple other area cities that are on the, um, Sauk River, so.
It's like Cold Spring.
Yeah, absolutely, Wade Park.
Cold Spring, Wade Park.
Richmond maybe, I don't know, there's a, there's a launch area on the Sauk from Richmond, I'm not sure. I know there is a Cold Spring, cause I used to canoe it all the time.
It's tough, cause you go downstream and then if you pick up the paddle down there, you got to paddle back and, okay, just kidding around, thanks, thanks Nate.
Yep.
Fire, Mr. Telfen.
Um, I wasn't here at the last, media was out of tone, um, but we've had a busy start to this year again. Uh, as of last week, we're at, just short of a hundred calls, we're way over a hundred now, we had six, what day was it? Yeah, so, guys are keeping busy, um, of course, a lot of them are medicals, haven't been able to really meet with Mayo about it. Um, the more thought process I'm thinking about, I don't know that these meetings are going to do anything to bring the call volume down. Because Mayo is still going to call, they're still going to ask us to show up, um, it doesn't matter if it's a facility. Or if it's a lift assist or whatever, that all depends, there's so many factors in there that we're going to get called, it's just these numbers are going up and up and up. So, that's where that's at, membership, we're currently at twenty-five, we have one that got turned in last week. Um, looking at least for another one before we start adding people. Um, pumper tanker truck.
Question for you too, about membership, I know we talked a lot about it, um, you know, we're, I think we talked about, you know, trying to do. Different signages was assistant chief or fire chief, was Mr. Salzer there trying to, did he find anything out about?
Uh, he hasn't said anything yet, so.
Okay, maybe follow up to see, I know he said he was going to try and reach out, um, and I know we talked about too, um, the St. Joseph Showcase. Trying to go there, trying to be a part of it, maybe that might spark some interest to try, you guys are there, hey, we see someone younger, come on in, let's talk.
Yeah, Therese sent me the information on it, so either I'll be there or I have a couple of days there.
I think, you know, that would be good or.
Um, and yeah, we were looking at different ways of trying to, um, get new members.
Right.
Along with every other fire department.
I think we had a good, you know, talk at the fire board meeting too, is talking about business owners even, is that possible, like to get them involved? I know we don't want to go farther out of the radius, cause then you're stealing like we talked about, which I thought was, you know, makes sense, but, you know, we, we need to try and retain. We need to try and grow, right, we need to try and keep people, I know that's what we talked about, that's a big thing and I want to keep that on the forefront of our, our thoughts. Moving forward too, for improvement.
Yeah, so one of the things we talked about at our last fire board meeting is, we, right now, um, you have to be within seven minute, live within seven minutes to respond. So we talked about, how about we allow folks that work in St. Joseph to be a part of our fire department.
If possible, business, they're here, if it's possible, feasible, I know, again, we talked about signs, I know Wade Park did a huge black sign forever. How much does that cost, what's the implication for a little bit, and you just add more, more traffic, more people seeing it.
Correct.
The showcase is a great idea too, but even generating more ideas, I know you got drill, but just throwing it out there, maybe some of your other guys might have some ideas.
Oh yeah, we bring it up every month, but.
Yeah, you know, I just, I want to keep that in the forefront and I know us in the forefront of what we can do too, to help too, so, just wanted to go back to membership. Cause I know, we can't just have so many people do it and then just keep going down and not recruit, so.
Um, bumper tanker, that's still on schedule, everything is good as far as I know. Our rescue van replacement, uh, I don't know, Therese, you want to touch on that a little bit or Lori?
So, we're going to actually, uh, bring that at a future meeting, likely actually your next regular council meeting, um, so, uh, yeah, council, we had discussed this. At, um, last fall, um, one of your work sessions of using ARPA dollars and you were supportive of that. So we do plan on bringing forth that purchase, um, our portion using ARPA dollars, um, St. Joseph Township, um. Is also supportive and most likely will use ARPA dollars, uh, we don't know, I mean, that, they're, they're open to that, but regardless, they would, they would fund a portion of it. Um, St. Wendell Township, um, we had discussed that last year already too, um, um, how they would fund it. And that arrangement, we are uncertain, so that's why it wasn't, um, in your packet this evening, we're still reviewing our agreement, um, with, with the townships.
St. Wendell.
So, once we have more on how that would work, our portion and the townships, then we'll bring it forward to you.
You guys are all aware too, so I wanted to decide not to go with the ARPA dollars.
That's my biggest concern, that they pay, pay that contract pays their fair share.
So reviewing the terms, cause, you know, from what I hear is, well, they, they, they didn't accept it, they don't want to pay for it, well, that's not, is that part of the terms of review? Right, make sure because.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is, I think, you know, Bob, maybe you can remember, um, St. Joe Township always had shares into the fire department. Where St. Wendell was not.
Right.
Yep.
So I think that was Greg's point on why they chose to go the way they did and say no.
Well, just like with anything else, they, they, they do their percentage share, that's always been passed on.
Correct.
So I, I wouldn't see that this would be any different, it doesn't matter how you fund it.
It was a come up quick budget idea, it wasn't that, nothing that we really planned for, um, yes, the truck was kind of scheduled for twenty, twenty-one. Re- twenty-two replacement, didn't know if we're going to have the funds until ARPA money came in and then everything kind of balls started rolling, so.
And the township's budget different than we do, different years and at different times.
And they're going to have a change of leadership, I assume too.
Yeah.
So just in the, in the macro picture, in the macro picture, no matter, I don't care who's paying for it, what does a new rescue van cost?
Uh, a hundred and forty-nine.
Hundred and forty, and what are we going to sell our old one for?
Well, it's gonna.
Do you think?
Potentially go into, uh, sealed bids.
Yeah, but what, what, what do you think we'd get for it?
Forty-five?
So we end up, it's a hundred thousand dollar difference and that's going to be paid through ARPA, yes, is that what I'm hearing? Or an equipment certificate or?
When we were.
A hundred grand, where are we going to get that?
Yes, so the city's portion, we intended on doing ARPA and that, that has been the discussion along and I think St. Joseph Township is on board with that. Using their ARPA dollars, um, St. Wendell doesn't have ARPA, so it's a different discussion regarding their percentage, so.
Good, thanks.
All right.
And I know we talked about trying to get that into sealed bid, so maybe it'll go up, maybe it'll be more than forty-five.
I think we can, with talking a little bit with Lori, we can set some guidelines that it has to be a certain number and they can't take it at a certain, until a certain time. So it could be higher than forty-five, it could be lower than forty-five or whatever, whatever we kind of set it at, so. Um, our grass rig replacement, we're kind of waiting with the whole trickle effect of the van replacement to see what kind of numbers we got. But I'm still having the committee get some numbers together, lastly, um, I shared it at the fire board meeting per their request. And I know some of you council members have also requested that, it's just the duties of the fire chief and assistant and, um, the secretary. So, it's not in here.
But we, I do have it, so I can share it with you too, um, and I think we could probably get it to them, maybe talk about it in a work session, I thought we brought it.
Yeah, so the intent, if you recall, last year when we were talking about budget, you had asked for, um, the, the, the list of the. Fire chiefs duties as well as assistant fire chiefs, so you had started talking about that for the, uh, in twenty twenty-two for the twenty twenty-three budget. So we'll, we'll start talking about that and share that with you all at an upcoming work session when we talk about budget.
Yep, and I've got a lot of that too, and, you know, we did have a really good discussion, which I thought at our, our, our last meeting, um, and I know personally, I want to keep it at the forefront. It's, it's one of those things, I think we had a good talk of, we have our leaders now that are in place, right? But who's next, who's next in line, who's going to step up and take over for chief when he's done? And then vice versa and vice versa and vice versa, the town's not getting any smaller, we know that, talk about, you know, police as well, adding a police officer. We got to kind of do the same thing with the, the fire department, but again, we're a volunteer fire department, how do you get more people active, how do you get more people here? Um, you know, there's a shortage, obviously, right, we talk about, I don't think it's just, you know, your pay and the assistant chief's pay, it's. What can we do to compensate to keep good people here that want to be here and, um, I know I'm passionate about it, I know you guys are as well. I think I posed the question to you guys, do you enjoy what you're doing, because if you're not, then we're missing the ball on something. And if you're still enjoying what you're doing, which you told me and I know your assistant chief did too, well, we want to make sure that we're on the same page as well. So, I know personally, I want to keep that at the forefront, we talk about it, you know, at the work sessions and when that does come to fruition, what can we do? But again, the big question, how do we lessen the medical calls too, right, how do we get away from that burnout? How do we keep you guys fighting fires, cause that's what you want to do, so.
Ultimately, yeah.
Yep, so again, I have those duties, we can put them in the, you know, the work session, I know it differs day to day, which we talked about, it's hard. But we appreciate you putting those together too.
Very good, thanks Jeff. Lori, finance?
I'm not going to read everything on here, but, um, I did have, uh, the editors here earlier, um, this month doing a little bit of preliminary work. They'll be back here the week of, uh, March fourteenth, I think they selected, um, council members they were going to talk to and already have. But, um, would ask that you keep your schedule open because as they go through things, they may want to talk to more of you. Um, working on several things, um, Vicki is, has been working on utility billing. Both like closing out twenty twenty-one, but also the March billing, it has the new rates on there and the new winter averages for folks. So she's been, she has those updated, ready to go, so, um, hopefully, um, we'll be able to answer questions. That come up out of that and not too surprising, working on a few things with debts in the background. Um, working with the community center, sometime we're going to have to do some financing, upcoming street project, um. Working a little bit with Bayou Blues, we had to, um, update some things on their TIF from their amendment, we're getting that put in place. So I've been talking to Tammy Amdal and Mary Ippe quite frequently recently, um, also sitting in on some development meetings. And fielding a lot of calls on a couple of properties that are for sale.
Yeah, can you, can you go over that, the Riverbats, the whole properties?
Yeah, those are, um, a couple, um, large properties that are currently on the market for sale. Um, the Riverbats is over just south of the Army, uh, Reserve Facility.
Good.
And the Hovey property is down, um, it's a sixty acre lot that's down by the school, by Kennedy Community School. So, um, both those are active on the market and we're just fielding a lot of calls, cause both those properties have some assessments on them, some deferred assessments, so.
How many calls would you say that you've been taking on?
I bet you last week I had at least a dozen.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
There's a lot of interest in them.
Are we talking residential with developers or?
Across the board.
Across the board.
So, um, I guess if the price is right and the market is, is what it is, there, I'm, I'm just going through the assessments. The deferred assessments that are on those properties with, with those property owners, so I'm, I'm not sure really what all their intentions are, but, um.
Wedding and event center.
What's that?
Wedding and event center, just kidding around, gee, it's a joke you got.
Well, you know, might as well keep it spare, right?
So anyways, sitting in on some of those, um.
Nobody catches my jokes right away, I don't get that.
Fielding those calls, sitting in on meetings regarding those, sitting in on a couple of meetings that they just called, talked about already with the sidewalk trails. Uh, the new ordinances, fee schedule, amendments, um, and I also attended the open house for the community center. Upcoming, just have the workshop and audit, so finance department continues our work there.
Question, uh, and this might be you and Ryan, uh, what was our snow plowing salt budget? For this fiscal year and where are we at in relation to?
Couldn't give you the number at, right off the top of my head.
I don't need the number this moment, but I just wanna get a sense of, I think we're, I think we're blowing through the budget, which is fine.
Well, we had salt and sand budget from last year. We had purchased, uh, quite a bit because we had two under our contracts, so like last April, March, April.
Yeah, we started with the full shed, so.
And you've replenished now the end of the year.
Yep, I just ordered a hundred and twenty-five ton.
So like, and I mean, are we underwater yet?
No.
We're not?
No, we're good.
We budgeted enough. We have enough sand and salt.
Yep.
What about overtime for your guys? Have you had to tap into a bunch of overtime with all the snow and stuff we had?
Well, we, I mean, we do. Um, I don't have the total dollar for that. Um, I think tomorrow, we'll be back out at three AM tomorrow, so that'll be the thirteenth snow we've been out this year, so. Some weekends require overtime, weekdays don't, so.
So maybe in the workshop, Lori, you could just kinda educate us on how that whole snow removal budget gets set? And good years when we don't have to do a lot of plowing and other years when we, you know, and how it.
And we try to budget in the middle of the road.
Don't know when the snow's gonna come.
No, you don't know, but I mean, if we come out on top, cause it doesn't snow, what do we do with that extra money when we come out in the red?
You buy more salt and sand.
I'm just curious about that.
I say you buy more and then you really have a surplus.
Historically, you can go back and see how many plow trips you do a year and that would give you an idea.
Do you know off the top of your head how many you did last year?
Four.
Yeah. Last year was a bad, a good year, I mean, a good year.
Yeah, we had a couple of years of kind of lower, lower numbers, but we've had years where we definitely exceeded budget.
I liked last year.
We tried to do like an average just because we know it kinda fluctuates. If there's excess budget, then we, um.
Yeah, thanks, I'm done.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Lori.
So just referring to what Kevin's question is, uh, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, okay, what was our under or over?
Still working on it.
Still working on it, okay. And normally that number, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, has gone over into debt relief. Usually.
Yes, yes, we, well, we try to, we try to have, um, enough equity in our general fund at the end of the year to have four to six months, what we call working capital. So four to six months of the next year expenditure budget. And the reason is, is because state aids and, um, the, the local government aid and your property tax settlements don't start coming in until June. So we've gotta still fund the first half of the year uh, without the major sources of income. So we, we set four to six months is what our, our policy is. So I will know more probably closer to the end of next week. So certainly I'll have you designate those probably at your first March meeting, I'm hoping for.
Yeah.
And to, and to council member Loso's point, whenever you get through all these cushion months, if we have extra money for whatever reason that we can pay down debt, I think that should be the emphasis.
We, we do, we do move money into the three ninety fund. That's where some of that three ninety fund is coming from. So that is certainly an option is paying down some of the debts out there, especially looking at interest rates on earnings versus what we're paying.
Sometimes it varies. If we're not in that six month window, we'll use some of that to shore that up and then, you know,
Mm-hmm.
It's a discussion.
Ryan?
Good. Yeah, uh, mayor, council, staff, um, so right now we're, uh, fighting a little water leak out there. Um, appears to be a water main, so how do we go ahead and back out there?
Yeah, what happened, do you know?
Uh, right behind cells.
Seems like we had a lot of problems there lately.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we've got two of the three valves shut off. One valve is froze all the way down to the, um, down to the bottom, so we're trying to jet that out right now.
Is that from the construction or?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Didn't we just replace a lot of that?
That, I don't wanna make speculation, but it, it appears, yeah. It should, it appears it, it should be warranty work. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so worked on the wellhead, uh, protection plan. We had the scoping one meeting with Minnesota Department of Health, SEH, and represented from Rural Water. Uh, nothing major really came out of that, just some simple do-outs for myself. Um, pushing back snow on the curb lines for the twenty-twenty-two street projects for the surveyors. Finished up the annual DNR report, ordered a hundred twenty-five more ton of salt. Um, having some lift station issues out there, uh, Northland and College South. Um, a lot of non-flushables are going through the system again, so we're pulling pumps quite frequently, cleaning them out and sending them back down, so. I and the rest of the staff are working on getting the messages back out again and, um, putting stuff in there.
I told my kid not to flush that crap down there, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the, the Swiffer wipes, they don't go in the toilet, yeah.
I know that. It's more crayons and toys, but.
Um, so we're just trying to get the message back out there again on that. Uh, been working on clearing hydrants out.
I had a question for you. You were here last time. I know we talked about, uh, in the, the newsletter that came out, adopting a fire hydrant. How many people do you have that actually adopt fire hydrants and clear them out?
Uh, fire hydrants or storm drains?
Either or. How about both?
I, I don't know that they actually formally registered the third adopting a fire hydrant. The message is just adopt a hy- higher fire hydrant and keep it clear.
So my question is, how many are you not doing and the citizens are doing? Do you know that?
Oh, very few get done.
Okay, just wondering. I just was really, you know, inclined.
Yeah. It's, when you see one, it's pretty surprising that it's been cleared out.
I know there's a couple around my neighborhood, but so I just was really interested in that, so.
Thanks. Um, starting a little bit of light remodel on Maintenance Three, which is the newest building we purchased and doing a lot of snow hauling. Um, really no change to the staff, um, business is normal. Upcoming events, um, continuing our, uh, education. I have a Central Minnesota Water Alliance meeting on the twenty-fourth of February. Tales on Trails this weekend on the twenty-seventh. And I'm supposed to, well, I, I am meeting the Snow Joes out there on this Thursday night. They're gonna groom that trail for the dog sledders, yeah. So that was kind of a nice gesture from them. Uh, Rural Water Con- Conference, Annual Rural Water Conference, one through three March. Uh, safety training with the League of Cities on the second of March and council again on the seventh. Pending any questions?
Coming to our workshop on the third?
No.
All right. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, chief?
All right. Mine's short and brief. Um, you know, it's hard to believe tonight, what the weather is right now that we're thinking spring, but, uh, we are actually meeting with the colleges and we're starting to talk about potential, um, how the graduation versus where Easter lies and everything else of what could be some possible busy weekends and and everything else and trying to staff that, you know, one of them has been case day in the past. Stearns County has come in with, uh, that the college hires on their dime. Um, they will hire four additional deputies, so we're trying to pinpoint a date, it's kind of a moving target, but we're pretty much sure that we know what your date's gonna be. Um, so there's a few things like that we're working on. Uh, same thing like Jeff had said as well, um, ICRs, I mean, a lot of them are medically driven, but I kinda gave you the breakdown that we did three hundred twenty-two ICRs for the month of January. If you go all the way back to twenty-twenty, um, technically that was still kinda pre-COVID or it was right about the time it kinda blew up. We're at two hundred and seventy-five, so there's just a gradual increase. It's there. We can feel it. We know it's there. It's just, doesn't seem to go back the other way at all, so. So it's just part of our discussions about staffing and everything else. Um, Therese alluded to the fact that we did only receive three applications for police officer. Um, does it concern me? Yes, but yet when I talked to the chief from Sock Rapids at our last meeting, he had seven. When he went through them, he said I had to toss three of them personally. He said they were so incomplete, I couldn't even let him go through. So he was down to four for the size of Sock Rapids. Doesn't help, you know. St. Cloud's trying to do a recruitment school. There's a lot of different theories coming up, but um, one thing that was actually discussed was that the five area, and this is very preliminary, but that the five area cities would maybe start looking at doing an internal school. Uh, possibly using all of our instructors and how somebody has a taser instructor, somebody has a firearm instructor, put on our own school that once they go through their law enforcement training accredited by the state, that we get the students through there so they wouldn't have as much of a bill coming out of it, but they would have to then work for the respective city for X number of years to get that possibly done, so. Uh, Chief Bentrud from Wade Park is kinda leading that, but you know, it's just in discussion at this point, but trying to figure out something for recruitment, just like fire department and everybody else. It's hard to get public servants nowadays, so. As far as upcoming meetings and events, uh, we are still talking as of right now unless something changes in the world again, um, that there will be a Joe Town Rocks this year. They've had several meetings with the church so far and then if we go back a few years when they were actually, you know, being, uh, put on, um, I usually attend one or two of them throughout the year to address some security concerns and some logistics, that kinda stuff. So they did invite me to the one tomorrow night it'll be, so we're gonna talk about some stuff there and hopefully it goes off without a hitch this year. And then twenty-fourth, which is Thursday night, we have a town hall at Brother Willie's Pub on St. John's, I think it is.
Yeah, I told you, you don't, you don't have to go if you don't want to.
Oh, I'll be there. Somebody's gotta protect you. So that's all I got unless you have questions.
Anybody?
Uh, let's see, uh, kind of the trend for the ICR is what's actually happening out there.
As far as where the numbers are coming from?
Yeah, I mean, incidents, what type of incidences?
Don't have that for you right now, no. I mean, we're still, we're working on things. There's, there's no doubt. There's just, there's things that are happening on a daily basis that we're still working on getting caught up. Um, I'll just, I'll just call it out the way it is, cause I'm very blunt about it. You know, with Mary would be the only person we had, we couldn't keep up with ICR. So we're fighting an upward battle right now. With putting candy in the front window has been great, but we have so much walk-up traffic and I think the rest of the staff will tell you too. There's people that are coming in for gun permits or coming in for fingerprints and it's just, I mean, you put something in that window, people come right to it, so. And she's doing a great job. She really has. And she's been very friendly with people walking in and so she's hit the ground running. We're very ha- very happy to have her, but there's just no way of hitting pause and saying, we're gonna get caught up. We'll see you guys in a month and it just doesn't happen, so.
I'm not talking about the administrative part. I'm more or less talking about what's happening on the streets.
Yeah, and that's what I can't tell you right now. I don't have those. We haven't even got our ICRs in yet so far, so.
I mean, you just, you don't know offhand what's, what's.
I can't, I can't give you a breakdown. There's, I would have no idea. I mean, primes up. What's that?
Are people getting crazier out there or, you know, I mean, that's what I'm asking, you know?
Speculation.
Kind of a social, social word for it.
Yeah?
I read the blotter.
I watch the news at night. It's crazy.
Well, yeah, I don't.
Chief?
Yes.
So where are you at? Where's the department and the city at on getting body cams for your officers?
So right now, uh, we had our final, this is about the last week of December, first week of January. We finally received our last word from the small rural tribal, uh, grant that we put in for that said, we did not place, um, there were seven hundred and seventy agencies that throughout the United States put in and only about a hundred of them had it, so they put us on a waiting list. I requested to know where we're at on their waiting list. Are we on the top hundred, the bottom hundred? I mean, do we even have a chance at this? So I've been attending these webinars so far about how to keep proceeding through with the grant in case they would award it to us. So I do have all the quotes in of what it's gonna cost. It's roughly about thirty-two thousand dollars to outfit the entire city, uh, staff as far as police officers go with the body cameras and the software that we need to host it all. So I don't have it in my budget right now for thirty-two thousand, so we're just trying to figure out. There was some people initially that stepped up that said that they would be able to donate some money. Um, and I've addressed them so far and they're kinda scratching their head now a little bit, so we're just.
So as our chief, you would like our officers to have body cams?
We, we would love them.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nobody in our department that said that they would rather not have.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yep.
So on that topic, uh, the governor's introduced three different bills. Okay, and we so, we should pursue what money is in what buckets, so we might be able to tap into that. I'm pretty sure that Jeff Howell would be all over that, okay? Uh, especially knowing where we at, uh, tax, uh, no tax partials, right? Okay, and I was gonna say Eric Putnam has introduced some, uh, uh, recruitment police legislation. I'm not exactly sure how it reads. It's, it's more monetary than anything else, but I'm gonna mention this to him about the school proposal. Okay, so I have a government affairs meeting tomorrow with St. Cloud Chamber and the government affairs group from St. Cloud Chamber, uh, mayors are invited. We go over legislative priorities and then projects in the area and then they carry them forward, uh, kind of like a six-city lobbying group. And so I have a big list and I've shared it with Therese. It's kind of all the things we got going on, plus the bonding bill and the, some of the development we got going on. Um, we, I don't know, Therese, I didn't, I don't remember you saying this, but we did get, uh, feedback from Lisa or Representative Damuth. Uh, she reintroduced the infrastructure bonding bill, the five million request. So that's gonna be carried forward by both and there's a partner bill in the senate as well. And like Dwight said, we have a town hall meeting tomorrow night? I mean, two nights, sorry. Where am I tomorrow? Oh, that, tomorrow's the government affair, sorry. Two nights from tomorrow. Um, and I've asked Therese, knowing that JR's is kinda stuck in civil litigation, I've asked Therese to bring forward to the council some condemnation considerations of that site. Only, I'm not saying we're gonna condemn it, but we want the parties to move and this may just, uh, incentivize it. So, um, that's on staff to bring something back to us to evaluate. And that's all I have. Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, condemnation, what are you talking about there?
The condemnation of JR's.
For what?
Well, to get them to either repair it or knock it down. Condomination says it's a ISO, it's a, it's a bad site. You have, these are the repairs you have to make to bring it up to code.
Uh, I'm not familiar with that type of condemnation. Anytime the city moves for a condemnation, it has to be, uh, for the public's interest.
And it, and if it's an ISO or blight, it is in the public's interest? Yeah, you can check the league. I know we go through it. It's a really long, lengthy process, but we can force them to clean it up. We can force them to make repairs on the building.
They did clean it up already. Compared to what it was. It took, it took over a different ownership.
Okay, this is the discussion we're gonna have when they bring the papers back.
Yeah, well.
Anything else?
I'm not really to, uh, discuss any condemnation of any properties because.
Well, then next time we bring it up, you don't have to discuss it. Item nine.
I move to adjourn, a second.
Motion in second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.
Kevin, I'll take that back.
Then, then, you know, when, when you go that route, there are other ISOs in the city.